Good afternoon and welcome to the red group scheduled October meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission. Appears that we do have a quorum. Ms. Davis? Thank you. First item of business is to review and approve the minutes of the meeting held in August of this year. Any comments?
I'm going to accept the minutes.
Have a motion by Ms. Anderson to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Minutes are approved. Mr. Lewis, would you like to identify the first applicant for us?
Yes, Chairman Cantrell. The first item on the agenda today is 519 East College Street. The applicants are Jeff Farah and he's requesting to replace aluminum storm windows with wooden storm windows on the sides and the front of his residence. The house is located on the east, on the north side of East College Street, near the mid-block between North Highland and North University Street. The house was built in 1910 in the colonial revival style of architecture. It has iconic columns on the front porch with a second horn, spallassade, and an elliptical arched doorway with lights. It's a two-story brick house with a hip roof. The house is also a contributing structure located in the East Main Street National Register District of the National Register of Historic Places. What the applicants are proposing to do is, you can see on the picture of the house on the monitor, they're wanting to replace the aluminum windows, storm windows, with the wood storm windows. And they want to do the right thing, so I told them that making the change, an appearance change, would require submittal of materials and a proposal to the Historic Commission. And they want to take it back to the days of the wooden storm windows. So they're wanting to, I think they're going to do this in phases. The sides and not all of the front at the same time, but the end result is going to be wooden storm windows around the sides and the front of the house, and I think eventually around the back also. But in the meantime, they want to get started. Let me see if I can take some pictures or scroll you through some pictures. This is just another picture of the, of the front of the house. And this is a close-up of the sides. And this is the other, the same side just farther back. This is the opposite side of the house. And that's, that's it for, for this. The applicant was not able to make the meeting today. He's on his way back from vacation. He did say that he would like to, to get moving on this. And if there was any questions that he, that you all had and I couldn't answer, he'd be willing to come back in November. But if there aren't any, I'd like to see, see you at least take some action on this application. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Lewis regarding the application? Any motions?
A move for approval.
A move for approval by Mr. Cross. Second by Mrs. Anderson. Any other comments?
I'd like to see more of this.
Yeah, this is wonderful.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the request say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Motion passes. Second item, Mr. Lewis?
Okay, the second item is, property address is 701 East Main Street. It's the Central Magnet School. It's the Rutherford County Board of Education. They're requesting to construct a student parking lot on campus. Let me bring up the, oops. Didn't want to do that. Like I say, they're wanting to, they've already got started, they started moving earth or dirt and they started preparation and actually did some gravel work out there at the, at the school. And they were, they were told that they needed permits to construct, to begin working on the parking lot. And there may have been some state permits that needed to be issued, and they did need approval from the Planning Commission, and they need to submit their plans to the Historic Commission for approval, for us to review and take a look at. In your agenda packages, I, I brought in a, a map of the parking lot. I did it again. And you can see that the parking lot comes off of University Street. And it goes back just south of the, of the soccer field that they have on the corner of Lidl and University Street. The entire parking lot's going to be paved asphalt, and they're going to have some landscaping in there. They've been working with the city planning staff, addressing some comments. And Mr. Mike Hughes from SEC is in the audience who drew up the design. And if you have any questions for either him or me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Lewis regarding this? Mr. Hughes, would you like to make any additional comments?
Chairman Cantrell, I'm Mike Hughes from SEC. And if you have the floor, you have got half-size sets of plans on page two. The location of the proposed parking lot is over the old tennis courts, those swimming courts and basketball courts down there now. So, and like Robert said, I got started, kind of did stream of this project, this, the kind of started the project. It was called, as I said, the property permits. But if you consider the, the area, it's less than acres, so state permits are not required as the city, the city plan and Historic Zone. As currently as, as the, as the school sits now, they moved from the middle school to the middle high school, native school. And they are short on parking. If you look at the front page, I've got some parking requirements. Middle school sized classrooms only need two parking spots per classroom. There are about 26 of those. The high school, which are the driver type high school, 10 through 12, need five parking spaces. And there are about 45 parking classrooms. So that, that is totally, they need about 277. Currently, they're sitting on about 247, not counting handicapped spots. But they're, they're short of parking spaces. They need to add these to the campus.
Would you like to address the landscape plan as well, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, sir. On, on page three, the combination site frame, the landscape frame. And what we've done, we've added landscape islands in between parking rows and trying to keep that down below 12 parking spaces per island. And we've added understorey around the old basketball court because there's overhead power lines and some larger shade trees, existing shade trees. We don't want to have them easily used to understorey trees. But we, middle parking lot, landscape islands, so October, January, May.
Was there not a shrub requirement around the parking lot?
Not, not, not knowledge there. It's usually around the building that will require parking. I mean, shrubbery around the new buildings, but we're just doing, adding some parking.
I believe there's trees required in the landscaping islands. I don't think there's shrubs.
No shrubs?
No.
Mr. Lewis, when you contacted the Rutherford County Schools regarding this, did you find out if there was actually a master plan that they have that they're building from? Or is it just more a reaction mode?
They didn't indicate any kind of a master plan that they, that they had. This is something that I believe that the County School Board just came up with.
Well, a question about the city permit. Is there any kind of requirement for stormwater runoff or anything like that?
Since this is over the old tennis courts, swimming courts, and basketball courts, the new, the increase in previous areas, less than 10,000 square feet, so they're not required to meet that.
Did you investigate previous pavement?
I did, but they'd already started on the parking lot.
Okay.
But the, the soil for the whole campus is, is really good B soils in USDA terminology. It's really good, percolates well, absorbs, runoff real well.
And did you look at the possibility of a rain garden or anything like that?
I did, but the, the county didn't want to do it.
Okay.
So what is the construction timeframe facility?
Well, if, if the city hadn't called, they'd probably be through by now. They just had to pave the, the gravels down and compacted, so they'd have to, they have to modify, add a few landscaping islands, dig that out and then pave, add striping and landscaping. So we're, you know, a few weeks to finish up.
Do you anticipate that the landscape won't go ahead and go in once the asphalt's completed?
It's getting late in the year, but I, I think you're still, we're still in a good planting season, that they could do this.
Is there a mechanism to be sure that landscaping occurs? Mr. Lewis?
I can tell you that the Planning Commission's considering this tomorrow at their Planning Commission meeting. This, this will be coming up as an agenda item. And right off the top of my head, I don't, I think there is a maintenance, some maintenance.
There's a three-year maintenance.
Three-year maintenance bond with this.
That, that was a Planning Commission requirement.
It seems we, Mr. Lewis, sometime in the past, we had an issue with some work beginning on a parking lot before approval was received, and maybe it shouldn't have happened again.
I believe you're right.
Yeah, we had a chain link fence erected as well.
Will there be lighting in the parking lot?
Well, it's unfortunate that a member of the school board or the schools not here because they, as Mr. Backlin stated, they do have a habit of starting things before approvals. And the main thing that's been in the craw of the Historic Commission here is the chain link fence that they put up without approval along North University and East Lidl Street.
Yes, sir.
And I'm wondering if this parking lot would eliminate the soccer practice that's adjacent to it? And if so, I would like, through you, a request to have that chain link fence removed since it was never approved in the beginning.
Yes, sir, I can relay that to the school board.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Done? Is there a motion?
I guess one other thing, Mr. Hughes, is that this is a perfect time to be planting. So I hope there's some kind of time limit, that they'll put some kind of time limit on themselves to go ahead and get that taken care of. Because, you know, we're going to have some fall rains now, it'd be wonderful.
Yes, ma'am.
Natural watering for those plants.
Well, I have a son that attends Central Magnet School, and they're having a musical coming up in a week or two, so they could use the additional parking, but I don't know if they'll get it in by that time.
Mr. Lewis, do we need to take action regarding this?
Yeah, yeah, you can, this was come for the commission for, for action to be taken.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the parking lot and the landscaping as submitted. With one caveat, that they would respond to us on their, what their direction would be with the unapproved chain link fence along North University and East Lidl.
You have a motion by Mr. Becker. Any other, a second motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any other comments? Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Motion passes. Mr. Lewis, item number three on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda, excuse me, is 425 East Main Street. The applicant's are, is Larry Costelli. They're requesting to add a, a new sunroom and storage area and a carport at the rear of the house. Property is located on the north side of East Main Street, midway between Manny Avenue and Highland Avenue. It was built, the house was built around 1835 originally in the Italianate style of architecture and later remodeled into the federal style of architecture. It has a projecting central bay window, or central bay with round arched windows and doorway, light paired brackets, two stories. It's a brick house with a hip roof and ornamental metal porch detailing. It's a contributing structure in the East Main Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants are proposing to add on to their house, to the rear of the house where the kitchen is. And I have, there's a board out here that you can see as well as your agenda packages. The store, let's see, the, the sunroom and the storage area and the carport all are going to be attached to the kitchen area, the existing kitchen area. And I have some pictures of the house. This is the, on the monitor here, there's, I think I have that on there. I have some pictures that show the, there they are. This is the front of the house, running Main Street. These are the columns to the front porch, they're fronting on Main. This is the area behind the kitchen where the, the project is going to take place, where the vehicles are parked. It's going to be extended toward the, toward the back of the house. This is the kitchen, the two windows that are in the kitchen that, that are facing, you can see from East Main Street. This is the view from Main Street toward the back, so you can see it's visible from Main Street. That's why it's coming for the Historic Commission. Again, these are columns that we're told that the, the columns to the carport in the rear are going to be the same as, or similar to the same as the ones on the front porch in style. This is the rendering of the carport. If you were standing on the, on the east side of the property, this is what you'd be Then this is the north elevation. And the west elevation, which is not going to be visible from, from the street. The, the material is going to be stucco, which is the same kind of material that they previously had an addition on to their house in 2005. As you see, this is the north elevation, so you can see the columns and then the windows. On the, on this view right here, it, it appears that this window is a double hung window. It looks like that in similarity, but I think the, the drawing says it's going to be an acasement window, so it's going to have that type of look. Mr. Steve James is in the audience who, who prepared the, the drawings for this project. And if you have any questions of me or him, we'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Lewis regarding the application?
What is the existing building at the back of the property?
I'm not sure exactly what it is. It's a brick, maybe a detached garage. Do you happen to know anything about that, Steve?
It was a original carriage house that had been converted to apartments.
Okay.
Yep. It's actually in access from the alley.
That's also owned by the Costellis, correct?
Excuse me?
That's also owned by the Costellis?
Yeah, and the house on the next street faces, it's also on their property also. And there is a retain, there is a brick, old brick wall between that carriage house and where we're doing this addition, that it will remain. He wants them to actually use that entrance to get to that carriage house, so it's staying.
So when he erects the carport, will that eliminate the parking for the apartment residents?
No, they have their own.
Oh, they still have their own.
This carport will just cover, is basically covering Larry's existing parking area.
There are any other questions or comments?
I just want on the casement window, Steve, is it not double hung because of the size of it? It's too small?
We went with the casement, sort of Larry wanted to, and I wanted also, the original window, this window is a case.
Okay.
So we requested we kind of dedicate this one to this one. It actually walked off of the bridge and lowered margin across the cabinets on the interior. And so we went back with the casement window to match that same type right there.
I think that this could be considered as one package rather than breaking it up today.
I think it's a well-executed design.
Nice job, Mr. James.
Why make a motion we approve it as submitted?
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the applications, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Motion approved. Mr. Lewis, do you have any other staff reports or business that we need to consider today?
Under staff reports and other business, I have, y'all got a copy of the 2013 calendar in your agenda materials, and that's just for your information, just to show that when we're having our meetings next year, so you can do some planning around it. In addition to that, Mr. Becker and I talked a little bit about the Manny Avenue study and how it is going to affect, I guess, the, the East Main Historic District. And I think he wanted to talk a little bit about how it's going to relate to the historic zone. And this is another subject that's coming up, another agenda item, it's coming up tomorrow at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission did have a public hearing earlier in the month, and they, they deferred any action taken on it pending some more discussion on some particular areas of the proposed area for the, the overlay area that the Planning Commission's considering. And the area, let me see if I can show this on, on the map here. If we can have the monitor. I didn't include it in your package, but.
Did you go to that meeting?
We're distributing maps of this, of the same thing. The area in blue is, is the border, is the area for this proposed CCO district. And what it entails is the zoning ordinance for the, for the city doesn't treat the smaller lots of this part of town very ease, very, very well. So that, that's why the city council and the planning commission's gotten together, and they're proposing some changes to the zoning ordinance with relation to these smaller lots. In addition to some of the areas that are closer to downtown, the type of uses that will be allowed on some of these lots in the particular zones, they're going to add some uses that will be allowed in commercial highway, commercial local zones, in addition to the RS4 and the multifamily zones. What the Planning Commission's going to do tomorrow is they're considering removing some of these areas that are along Broad Street. There's an area to include the, the East Main Historic Zone that was included in the original, the map here. They're going to talk about removing that in addition to some other properties that you can see on your, one of your maps that you have that, that are on Gale Lane and Vine Street. So they're going to be talking about that tomorrow. And I'll be, like I say, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this. I know Mr. Becker probably has some.
Well, yeah, I asked Robert to bring this up to our board because I had some concerns with the Main Street Historic Zone being in this city core overlay. They refer to it as a CO, CCO. And the reason being, I didn't see an advantage to have the historic zone in it. A possible disadvantage is, is that this CCO, in certain cases, would allow small business as, which would be allowed in a commercial highway zone. And it was unclear, in the, in the data, it goes up to RS8, but it doesn't include RS15, which most of the lots are in the historic zone. But I'm not, I wasn't quite, excuse me, quite sure if there was any RS8s in that zone. So I talked to Joseph A. a lot prior to the last meeting and talked about the concerns that I had with it. And he thought it would add more flexibility to the properties along this particular area, especially ones that required the 32-foot setback if you were to rebuild. This would allow some flexibility and not having to go through variances to make that happen. For example, the Patterson House, which is in the 300 block of East Main, sits really close to the street, maybe 10, 15 feet away. So if that house was to burn down, the owners of the property would not be able to rebuild back with that same setback unless they got a variance. That being said, I still was a little uncomfortable with it. And at the last public hearing, Ron Taylor, Anna Rilia Holden were at it and made their feelings known that it should not be included, and so at that particular meeting, it was deferred. But I just don't see an advantage. I just see sort of complications coming down the line in the future with the new zoning in the historic area, which would just mean more work on our area to say, okay, we, somebody wants to put a beauty shop in somewhere along that line, and we don't agree with it, but the, the new zoning would allow it.
So what, what are the types of uses that are allowed under the CCO? Are they specified or are they?
Yep, I can give you an idea on the ones that will be Yep, I can give you an idea on the ones that will be allowed, if I can find them in here. Should we give me a moment? Ones that are not currently allowed in these districts, but which would be proposed to be allowed either by right or by special use permit would be an antique shop, art or photo gallery, a barber or beauty shop, a clothing store, delicatessen, funeral home, interior decorator, laundries, self-service office, restaurant, and carryout restaurant, restaurant specialty, and retail shop. I think these, other than the historic zone, Main Street Historic Zone, these are all good. I mean, and these are all, I'm personally in favor of that being in the rest of this map area, but I would just hate to see us have to deal with that. Now, they do say on there that it require, it would be available in RS4, RS8, residential duplex, RM12. I'm not sure what RM is, Robert.
It's multifamily zone.
And RM16. We do have some multifamily residents along East Main Street that were grandfathered in, so I guess my personal opinion is, is that I'd like to see it, it removed, Main Street Historic Commission be removed, and I thought it would be good that our board make a recommendation that could be carried forward at the next meeting.
Let me add, just the base zoning for the zoning ordinance doesn't affect the historic commission's actions. Whatever the base zone is, we have some commercial highway, we have some commercial local, we have some residential duplexes, and like Mr. Becker said, there are some apartments that are in the historic zone, but if they ever burned, they would have to be built according to the zone that they're going to be, that they're located in. Excuse me. Like I say, the, an antique shop, it has to be a commercial zone for that, or an RS4, I'm just giving an example, and there's no RS4 in the historic zone, so none of the, none of these uses that they were, and I hand, the brochure that you handed out, was handed out, it explains what's allowed in RS4, RS8, duplex zoning, RM16, and RM12. If one were to come for the historic commission, the type of use wouldn't be up to the commission to approve or disapprove, it would be up to the Planning Commission and the City Council. So a delicatessen may move into a house, it would still have to have the appearance of a house with our design guidelines in effect. We would get a say-so in how the appearance of the property looks, not the use.
So you're saying now, Robert, that if somebody that lives in the Main Street Historic Zone went to the city and wanted to put a beauty shop in, or a delicatessen, that we would not have much authority in approving or disapproving it?
Right. That would be up to the Planning Commission and City Council. I mean, we could, we could discuss it, but if they approved it and it were to go into a house, the appearance couldn't change unless you decided to agree with whatever proposal they proposed. It would still have to have the appearance of whatever building it is right now.
I guess I'm not sure how any business could get in the Main Street Historic Zone at this point because of the parking requirement.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of things that would have to be done in order for a commercial business to operate, and I don't know off the top of my head how it would operate.
One example might be the Demos Office Building on Manny Avenue, which they've done an incredible job of restoring that building, and I would hate to preclude something like that from happening if there were a building that were in poor condition and a business wanted to apply to change zoning, you know. So I, generally speaking, I would say in that, in that part of town, maybe not Main Street, but, you know, maybe that mixed use is desirable, and I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting on any kind of a motion now to say we should be excluded until I've had a chance to read the material.
Well, this isn't any action for us to take, this is just for discussion purposes.
Okay. Excuse me. What was your feeling after, you know, the discussion and Aurelia and, you know, Ron spoke?
Well, my feeling is, I'm not sure what advantage it is to the property owners in the Main Street Historic Zone to be in this, in this CCO. I see the advantage to it just south of us, to all those property owners that have the small lots and have houses that are, are right, you know, right on top of the streets, but I don't, I'm not sure what advantage it has to the property owners in the historic zone.
Property owners would have the protection always, in all cases, of the historic commission to guide the appearance of the property, no matter if it's Junior's Grocery, the Episcopal Church, or a house. The commission, the historic commission will have the authority to, to say how, what the appropriate appearance is for the properties in the historic property, no matter if it's a delicatessen, or an antique shop, or a house.
This document that you handed out, on the page is numbered, but backside of the first page, it says Exhibit 1, Exhibit 2, Exhibit 3. And Exhibit 3 gives the base zones of RS4, RS8, RD.
Okay, is this the last? Okay.
It's Page 7 on my packet.
And so you had to be in one of those zoning classifications, either have a by right or special use permit for those commercial uses that are listed in there.
Could you repeat the question? I was looking for it.
I'm trying to figure out the uses permitted chart.
Okay.
Okay? Because on Page 2, the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance to create the CCO under use regulations, it would be Article 6C. So I'm trying to figure out if this is the chart, because Exhibit 1, back here I have a Chart 2.
Okay.
I don't have a Chart 1. I guess, because what I'm getting at is 95, 98 percent of the properties that are in the CCO that are also overlapped within historic zoning district are classified R15. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So if I read this correctly, then these commercial uses that are here, okay, it precludes the R15 zoning classification.
Right.
So it's only these little parcels that are near Gale Lane at East Main that is currently classified R8.
RS8?
Yes.
There's...
So am I, I'm missing something here as to, our properties currently zoned R15, okay? They should have these commercial activities, or no?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
No, this, this is just saying that...
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because of what you handed, you know, it just doesn't, doesn't flow correctly for me.
I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons why, why we even including it since, you know, around 90 percent.
Well, there's very few properties that are commercial. There's just a few properties that are commercial. I think I tallied, I think there was six properties that were commercial highway, a couple, one it was commercial local, one was residential duplex, the rest are, the majority is RS8, RS15, and RS10.
Well, RS8 is included in this list.
Right.
Yeah.
There's some RS8.
And then the OGR extends over to the properties that are east of Academy and facing on Main Street. Is that an OGR classification?
Yeah.
And there's about, what, three parcels?
And they're proposing to change that zoning. Is that the ones, is that the ones that are highlighted? OGR to CH?
They're going to change that to...
They're going to change some zonings. One of your maps that you have that are highlighted, there's an area CH to CBD up in the upper right hand, left-hand corner, and then below it, there's one OGR to CH, and then a CL to CH.
Uh-huh.
Then you see where the city cemetery is.
Uh-huh.
That's RS4.
But the specific parcels I was referring to are the ones that face Main Street that are just east. They would be underneath the little box that says CH to CBD.
Okay.
So you're not visible there. So it doesn't appear that those classifications are changing from an OGR. It's going to remain OGR.
Okay.
I mean, that's what it looks. And then, so that's three parcels, and then, then at Gale Lane, it looks like you have two parcels? At Gale, and then just west of Gale? On Main Street?
On Main Street?
Mm-huh.
Okay. I think all, everything on Main Street is either RS8 or RS15.
Correct. And then we have some R10, which is between First Avenue and Middle Tennessee Boulevard.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I mean, this doesn't, most of what they're proposing is, they're proposing for commercial highway and commercial local, then the RS4 zones, and then some of the RS8, well, RS8 zones.
So I guess my point is, if you're currently classified R15 and you're within the CCO, your uses permitted do not change. Is that correct?
Say that one more time. If you're RS...
If you're RS15...
Okay, yeah.
And you're within the CCO...
Right.
Your uses permitted will not change from what they currently are.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. Well, I was having a hard time following it.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, because it looked like, you know, you would be eligible for all those special use activities or by right activities.
No, no.
So what would be the appropriate time for this commission to be involved in this if at all?
Whenever, whatever you think is, you know, best. Like I say, it's gotten to the point where the Planning Commission has held a public hearing. There was many meetings at the Patterson Park for public comment. The public hearing was held and, by the Planning Commission, and it was deferred, and that's the point where we're at now. The Planning Commission is going to probably take some action tomorrow to recommend removing some of the properties from the, from the CCO district.
Okay.
Like I say, that's, they're considering the historic, East Main Historic Zone.
Okay.
The properties on Gale Lane.
Okay.
The properties that are on northeast, southeast Broad Street that are already commercial highway, and they, I think they want to leave them there because some of them have car lots on there.
Okay.
So they're going to remove those from the CCO district. They don't want car lots in the, in the CCO district.
Okay.
That's what, they're going to be talking about tomorrow at the Planning Commission meeting.
So at the public hearing, you had the comments from some residents within the historic district that said, just draw the line back off of that frontage, and that's being considered by the Planning Commission.
Right.
And we still have the City Council yet to entertain all this.
There'll be at least another public hearing by the City Council, if it moves forward.
Okay.
Well, I just thought it was important that we have a discussion on this whole issue versus having everything approved, and then somebody saying, why, well, why wasn't the Main Street Historic Board involved in at least providing some input?
As a body, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure that, I would think at some point they would ask.
Nobody was asking. The thing was already, if the Planning Commission would have approved at the last public hearing, it would have been a done deal with the Planning Commission thing, then, so nobody was asking. That's why I thought it was important we bring it up.
But I would like to know for sure that those are the, there's only the five parcels or so that would be eligible for a use change. I think you've answered that for me, and that's what these documents seem to portray.
I'm sorry.
Those are the ones on the corner of Main Street and where the Episcopal Church is and Junior's Grocery.
Yes.
No, they're on the, they're on the other side.
Uh-uh.
They're not, the church and Junior's are on the north side.
Right, and then one's south of it.
It's only the south side...
Okay.
That's involved in this.
Yeah, the south side. Well, that's true, yeah.
And it's only a few parcels, but...
Yeah.
As a result of that, I didn't see, if they're excluding RS15 from the opportunity for these other businesses, then why even have the Main Street Historic Zone in it?
That's a pretty good point.
So you felt like your concerns were well-taken?
Well, I wasn't sure that they were well-taken or not, but I'm feeling a little more comfortable hearing Mr. Lewis state that they are going to consider removing, or changing the boundaries, yes. As of this meeting, I'm feeling a little more comfortable. Would it be the end of the earth if they didn't? No, but it's just seemed, I just didn't see the advantage of incorporating the historic zone in it.
Yeah, because, you know, a use change, if it's fairly dramatic, would likely be some sort of architectural change, or signage added to the property, or things that would involve us that may place us in a compromised position to say, well, I've done this, and push hard to get it to reflect the use.
That's all I have.
Maybe we could just relay that to y'all?
Well, I mean, even if Robert just lets Joseph know that, and I mean, if somebody on our board, I mean, gets a little unsure at this point, but if somebody on the board thinks this would be a big advantage for the properties in the Main Street Historic Zone that are, that are south of Main, then maybe we should let it alone, but I personally don't see it at this point.
Well, if someone attempted to make a reclassification of one of the properties from an RS15 to an RS8 just to gain the privilege to be, have a commercial activity, that would be certainly devastating.
And I would agree, I would agree that the Demos renovation up there has really made a fallen-down property really look good.
And that went from residential multifamily to, I don't know what the zoning classification is now.
Playing commercial development, I think.
It's an office, and it really is.
Although some of the neighbors up there are not happy with the additional parking because around the whole house is parked.
Yeah.
New office, so...
They did a nice job with landscaping, which sort of alleviated some of that.
Any other comments regarding this, or anything else before the commission? If not, we'll be adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, I remember when he talked to us. You know, I remember when he talked to us.